...policy of the police department for a very long time. The two main points, one is that they don't stop and ask for anyone their immigration status, and two, when they respond to detain requests, they only do so if it's legally required. So why is it important for us to actually put this down in writing now? Well, one, due to what we've heard from Washington, we expect an increase in detain requests, so we want to make sure our police department has very clear understanding and really spell out the laws. We've seen some other police departments that have kind of like three lines about when they should respond and when they shouldn't. We thought that we should actually give a little more meat to that bone. And secondly, we think it's very important for anyone who might be undocumented to feel comfortable coming forward. That's actually a large problem if there's a population that lives in our village or works in our village that feels they can't come forward to the police department for fear of being deported. So those are the two main reasons that we feel this is important tonight. And flipping the format a little bit, typically the board speaks and then we listen to public comment. We thought since you've heard from us on this quite a bit, we'd rather hear from the public first and then we'll speak afterwards. So I will remind everyone our rules. Everyone gets three minutes, and then if you have more to say, you can wait until everyone else speaks, so then you come back for another three minutes. So I will ask whoever would like to speak to maybe state their name as well, and we'll try to do it as orderly as quickly as possible. As you're standing closest to the microphone.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the trustees, and good evening to my neighbors. And I live here in Irvington at 61 Havemeyer Road. I am grateful for the opportunity to come here and to speak in support of the policies the board is considering. I believe strongly that helping to make Irvington a welcoming community for those who may live in, work in, or even just come through shopping or visiting in our town is the right thing to do. It will make our community safer and stronger, and it is true to our founding ideals as Americans. Over these last few weeks, we have seen a paralyzing fear take hold in immigrant communities around the country. People are afraid to go to work, afraid to leave their homes, afraid to take public transportation, afraid to go to doctor's appointments, and afraid to take their children to school. People feel unable to make plans even for the very nearest future, not knowing what the next day or week will bring and not knowing if their families will still be together. I spoke to one woman who works in Irvington and has lived in the United States for 20 years. Her children are U.S. citizens. She has been deeply afraid that her family may be torn apart. She knows that her children are anxious and struggling with the pervasive fear that is gripping their schools, but she's too afraid to speak to anyone at the school about the need for counselors to step in and help the children cope. Every night I tuck my young children safely in and turn out the light. I think about how relatively secure their little world is and how devastating it is for parents who cannot make it so. On many nights, I think about children around the country who are tossing in their beds, worrying about what will happen to their families, and wondering what they could have possibly done to deserve to live with such fear. We are not talking about criminals. We're talking about law-abiding people whose worlds have been suddenly turned upside down. My family comes from Moscow. My mom was born there, but my maternal grandmother was American. She's from Chicago. She came to live in Russia in the 1930s, met my grandfather, and had two children there during the Cold War. My mom has relayed to me childhood memories of a little suitcase under the bed that her mom kept packed, of living with the ever-present possibility that there would be a raid and that someone might come for her mother and take her away. The measures the board is considering tonight can help ease the all-consuming fear that has become a daily reality for so many families. They will not prevent federal law enforcement from carrying out their work. They will not lead to noncompliance with any federal mandate, but they will make clear that Irvington will not voluntarily step in to put families in danger or to pull them apart. I also want to express my very strong support for the resolution preventing cooperation in the creation of any federal registry based on religion or any other protected status. Such a registry would be profoundly un-American. It would hearken back to some of our darkest days as a nation during World War II, when we interned innocent Americans for no reason other than their ancestry. We can never set foot on that terrible road again. Thank you so much for the resolutions that you're considering. Thank you for the support you have shown for them so far, and thank you for the opportunity to come and speak on their and their support tonight.
Thank you. Those ones exactly. Who next?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mitchell Bard, and I live at 140 North Broadway in the Village, and I'm going to keep my remarks brief because I assume all of other people want to speak too. First, I just wanted to thank the board for taking the action on immigrants that they're taking, because I think it's both the right thing to do as well as being in the best interest of the village. And I think you're expressing the values that have drawn families like mine to Irvington for a long time, and I appreciate it. We moved here four years ago to be in a village like this. What I think is really interesting is that the arguments opposing the policy statement that I've seen are factually wrong. You know, we know that this statement isn't in compliance with federal law, and we know from lots and lots of social science research that communities with immigrants tend to have lower crime rates than ones without. So really, I just want to express what I think this is about, and I think everyone here knows is about, and that is, this is really the actions of people trying to stoke fear, and it's fear over things that don't exist. It's ginned up fear as a way to drive policy, and in this case, the policy that's trying to drive is bad policy. And I wanted to note that when Americans traditionally fear, we make bad choices. We end up with things like the internment of Japanese-American citizens in World War II, and we end up invading Iraq after 9/11. And I think that what we need to do is we need to act with courage, and we need to do the right thing and not succumb to fear mongering. And that's why I'm so proud when I heard what the board was doing, because I see the board acting in what's the best interest of the village and doing what's right rather than succumbing to fear, and I want to thank you for that. Thank you.
My name is Audrey Feinberg. I live in Circle Drive in Irvington. I have been a resident of Irvington for over 20 years. Both of my boys have gone through the Irvington School District from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. This is the first board meeting, I believe, I've been to, and I came out because I think this is a very important issue. I want to tell you, Irvington, you have made me proud. I want to thank our police department, and I want to thank the board for indicating that we are a community that will be welcoming to all citizens, all workers, all residents, no matter what their national origin. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Elaine Katz, and I reside at 76 Greenway Drive. I am a 23-year Irvington resident and ex-village judge who raised two children in this community who attended our public schools. I applaud your decision to adopt a progressive policy statement on immigration enforcement and discrimination. Contrary to the fear-mongering email included in the packet for tonight's meeting, this resolution is neither bad policy nor bad law. The overwhelming statistics show that when the police collect immigration data and report it to federal authorities, victims and witnesses of criminal acts remain silent, reducing safety in our village. Also, as an Irvington taxpayer, I want my tax dollars spent on progressive community police programs that encourage cooperation between the police and our residents and enforce our village law and New York State criminal laws, not federal immigration policy. Also, this resolution is very well crafted. It follows guidelines distributed by our New York State Attorney General, is similar to pending legislation in both New York State and Westchester County. With this resolution, as our elected officials, our police, and village residents loudly proclaim that we shall continue to be a tolerant village, a haven standing for the values that make Irvington the special place that it is.
Literally not, you'll be too polite.
Next. Who would like to speak next?
Hi, my name is Lori Regan, and I'm apparently the fear monger who wrote a lot of the emails that have been referenced by some of the speakers. I live at 2 Riverview Court, and I've been in town for almost 30 years as a taxpaying resident here. I find it ironic that the board opens their meetings with the words, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America," and then proceeds to pass a piece of legislation specifically designed to subvert the federal laws of the nation to which you just pledged your allegiance. The only allegiance you have exhibited throughout our email exchanges and the process leading up to the impending passage of this sanctuary city law, and yes, it is a sanctuary city law, whether you all like the term or not, that's the reality, gives safe haven to people who are here illegally, is the terror of liberalism and your desperate need to, as Brian and Constance stated on the news, make a quote-unquote "statement" and project a quote-unquote "attitude," which I would further describe as basically an F-U to the current administration to whom you personally, politically, and ideologically disagree with. I would point out that the last time in the history of the United States that citizens subverted the Constitution of the U.S. and its laws was the Civil War. Ironically, it was those who wished to own slaves who ignored the laws of the land, and yet almost 160 years later, we have progressive members in blue states who wish to cherry pick which federal laws they will and will not enforce. It is further ironic that the mayor of Montville, New Jersey, a Syrian refugee with family and friends who were refugees, specifically opted out of making his town a sanctuary city, incisively stating that his personal feelings were not relevant, and mayors should not advocate defying federal law so that he would not sign an executive order asking his town's employees to do just that. History has proven that when citizens do not adhere to the laws of the land, democracy fails and anarchy ensues. For some reason, the lessons of history seem to have been overlooked by you all, as you invite the Wild West into our town where you all believe you have been given a mandate to subvert our Constitution based on your own personal beliefs rather than what is best for our community. I wonder what other federal laws you all might decide to ignore. Will it be recreational pot dispensaries and IV drug user clinics on Main Street next? Or will you send...
Federal law prohibits that currently, as does state law.
Or will you maybe collect up Irvington residents' guns?
Want to clap for that, too?
I have asked you all numerous times how you have the audacity to determine what federal law with which you disagree will not be enforced in our town and how you do not recognize this as a dangerous and slippery slope. To Constance, I would add that this is not about projecting an attitude, and you were not elected for that purpose. It is about the rule of law, and if you think we elected you to go on television and smile before the cameras about your attitude, I respectfully request that you resign. You all took an oath to protect the citizens of Irvington. Nothing in that oath states that your job is to protect criminals over those who elected you. It is also sad for me that our mayor has the audacity to give numerous interviews in which he espouses his desire to make everyone in our community feel safe, and then he specifically ignores those of us who raise very real and valid safety concerns. The only people who this board are obsessively concerned with are those who come through our town with illegal immigrant status and not those of us who have lived and paid taxes here for decades. What about us? I do not feel safe here right now, Brian, because you have not explained to me how you're going to keep me safe when you told me...
Three minutes to sleep.
I'm taking the time, the three-minute time for two other people back there.
You can take it again.
Keep me safe.
You can come back. I'll let you finish your thought here, but you can come back at the end.
When your policy may very well lead to a dangerous criminal being released in our streets to rape and murder.
Perfect. Come back.
Can I ask?
We'd like to ask.
My name is Tom Packer, and I reside at 14 North Buckout Street. I'm here to voice my support for the resolution. I'm also here to express my gratitude to the board and the village attorney for shaping this resolution after receiving guidance and input from residents, so thank you for that. I've spoken previously to the board about the moral dimensions of this policy, and tonight I wish to speak to two issues that appear to concern some in our community, as reflected in the previous speaker. First, this resolution in no way contravenes the Constitution of the United States. It does not impede federal immigration enforcement officials from doing their job and enforcing the law, nor will it result in noncompliance with federal law. Attorney General Eric Schneiderman, the highest-ranking law enforcement official in New York State, has assured us of this. And secondly, the argument that a policy such as the one that the board is considering will breed crime and result in countless needless deaths lies squarely in the face of the facts. A recent analysis of FBI crime data by UC San Diego political science professor Tom Wong found that most counties with similar policies have notably lower rates of all types of crime, including homicide, than comparable counties without these policies. Another study analyzed FBI and Census data from 1980 through 2010 and found that among men ages 18 to 49, immigrants, both legal and illegal, were far less likely than native-born Americans to engage in criminal behavior or to be incarcerated. These are but two of many studies that reach similar conclusions. Several national policing associations stand behind the adoption of policies similar to the one the board is considering. One of them, the Major Cities Chiefs Association, which represents the 63 largest urban areas in the nation, stated that immigration enforcement by local police would likely negatively affect and undermine the level of trust and cooperation between local police and immigrant communities, which would result in increased crime against immigrants and, in the broader community, create a class of silent victims and eliminate the potential for assistance from immigrants in solving crimes or preventing future terrorist acts. So thank you very much for considering this resolution tonight, and I hope that all of you will vote unanimously in favor of passing it.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Friedman, and I reside at 200 Riverview Road. This is my third time coming before this group. I would like to just humbly express my profound appreciation for the consideration of this resolution and to support the resolution. As I previously stated, I'm an attorney and I'm the legal director at a local nonprofit organization called My Sister's Place, which provides legal services and a variety of other services for domestic violence victims. One of our major areas of legal representation is in immigration law. I just want to point out that there are several very, very important laws, actually many of which were passed by Republican administrations in the last couple of decades, which provide protections for immigrants who come forward and disclose that they've been a victim of crime. There's something called a U-Visa, and there's something called a T-Visa. Our clients are petrified to pursue their rights, which is to report a crime to the police, because if they are undocumented, they now fear that they will be deported upon coming forward. It is an example like that that shows exactly how the kind of restrictive immigration policy creates a lack of safety in our communities. We have to have our residents able to come forward and work locally with police to address the serious crimes that can be occurring in any community, as domestic violence and other forms of violence does occur in every community. That's just one example. I join the other supporters of the resolution in the various other very positive, important reasons to support this. I have spoken previously about our clients who, as has been mentioned, are petrified to leave to go to work in the morning, afraid that they won't come home that night and their children will be parentless. I don't think it is in the interest of public policy to leave children parentless, put into foster care as a result of deporting their parents. I don't think that's the kind of country we are, and clearly, that's not the kind of neighborhood that Irvington is. Thank you.
My name is Michael Cornman. I'm a 45-year resident. I'm the grandson of immigrants. My wife is the granddaughter of immigrants, and I dare say that there's not a person in this room who isn't an immigrant, the son of an immigrant, grandchild of an immigrant, or great-grandchild. This is America. This is Irvington. It's a wonderful place. We have discussions, broadly, the majority of the people in this room, and I'm included in them, support the board and the individuals who support for what they're doing. I just briefly like to say that for those who shall remain homeless, if they want to be safe, just follow the sign, Walk Safe, Look When You Cross It. This proposed policy is not going to make you one iota less safe than you already are, and indeed, it will make you safer. The way to proceed is not to vilify by name individual officials. That's not constructive, it's destructive. I'd just like to again say the board is to be congratulated on simply adopting a policy which is just, it does provide liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I wanted to speak before having to leave the area, because you can see I'm tied up right now. I wanted to speak as a migrant and resident of the town, and I wanted to thank you for considering supporting this measure that will provide much relief and peace of my or other fellow immigrants that work and spend our time here. Sorry, I'm emotional about this because this is, I'm dismayed that some people might pass judgment on the very important decision that other people make just to risk their lives to provide. And it will be equally unfair for me as it will be equally unfair for me to determine which is somebody else's work or choose to study. I just want to acknowledge that it's not up our business to be able to pass judgment on those decisions, but it is pertinent to us, the things that we can actually do. We can actually pass a resolution that supports and provides a safety, a safe area for other people to have the peace of mind that they're not going to be separated permanently from their families and to provide a safe haven for them to feel comfortable to report any type of criminal activity if they were to see it. So I just wanted to express my... Here's a 30-second wish I would do, thank you.
Who's next? Who's next?
I've been a resident of this village almost 50 years. Live at Ten Castle Road in Irvington. And I'm here to tell you that I don't support the board's position on this at all. I think you started off, Mr. Mayor, about saying how the police department already complies with almost everything here, so I really don't see a need for this. If we're already doing what you want us to do, why do we have to put something in writing that goes pretty much against what the federal government is saying right now and letting Irvington raise their hand and saying, "Here we are, we're Irvington, and we're really not going to answer all your questions if you call us and ask us questions about immigration or this or that." I don't see that having a benefit to us. I don't see that having a benefit to the residents. And if there's no need, then what's the purpose of this? It seems to me that the purpose is really just to make a statement, and I don't really think that making a statement has any real benefit. I mean, I can't believe that we would do this just to make a statement. The police department protects everybody here. Michael said law and liberty, liberty and justice. We already do that. We are all immigrants. That's fine. We also want protection in here. We want to keep everyone safe. The police departments aren't interrogating anybody. No one's on Broadway stopping them and asking them where they're from. We already act properly in the village of Irvington. So I would say that if there's no need, then we shouldn't be doing it. It's wrong. And I think that, as one person mentioned, it's a progressive position. However, I don't think you're going to have bipartisan support for all this, because I think the main support really is for the protection of the people in the village of Irvington. I don't think we want to let everyone know, "Here we are, come on in, work here, live here, and play here," more than you are doing now. We already do that. Why do we want to raise their flag and have them come in here? And this adds more regulation to the police department. Why on earth do we want to add more regulations to the police department? If they're already doing this, now you have to give them more details that they have to worry about. I don't see any benefit to the village, to the residents of this village, by adding anything more that the police department have to do when they're already doing the job that you want us to do. Thank you.
Who's next?
Hi, my name is Sarah Burson. I live at 169 South Buckout Street. I have not lived here for 50 years or 45 years. I've lived here for three and a half, and I'm a happy resident. And I disagreed with a gentleman before, because there are times when you must stand up, and you must make a statement, because otherwise, you are among those who are hiding, and we have nothing to hide. If this is our belief, if this is what we stand for, then we should make that statement.
Hello, my name is Tamir Rosenblum. I live at 1 Park Sideway. I've lived in this town for 20 years now, and I just wanted to just thank the board, but also point out that there's been a lot of references to the Constitution and what's right according to our country's history, and it just occurred to me that the way our country is structured is that there is a federal government, and there's state government, and there's two sovereigns. And part of democracy is we get to have a community, that we don't just adhere to some federal authority which dictates all of our sentiments and beliefs. And so what I see happening here is, regardless of what I may see around me and the rest of the country, and I won't even for a moment start to talk about my sentiments about that, but I do live in a town, and I have a democratic voice here, and it's part of what our Constitution gives us, is to make rules and make order and make a society here locally. And so for me, this is an exercise by the board and by this community of doing something which I think will help this community. It's not just a statement. It's about how we live here, how we have lived here. It's a good place to live, and I strongly believe that in this time of doubt, by setting this in writing, that's what we do as a democratic society, and I'm proud to be part of it. Thank you.
My name is Neil Lipinski, and I live at 34 South Cottonet Street. I have lived here for about 24 years. This is the first time that I've gone to a mill like this, about anything that has moved me. So, you know, I'm going to speak, and I want to thank the board for the resolution and we're encouraging them to pass it hopefully unanimously, so that we can really give a strong voice to those who don't have the voice and to those who will be driven underground because they're afraid to come out. I have a sister who's an immigration lawyer in South Carolina, and she tells me stories of the god-awful fear of these mothers and their fathers and their children who cannot leave their homes, who cannot go to school, cannot go to doctor's appointments, for many of the same reasons that one of the speakers said before. This is, this gives them a voice, because they do not have the voice. And if we are not to actually codify this in this resolution, then we too shall be voiceless. And when those of us who are lucky, by dint of our birth, by dint of our color, by dint of our sex orientation, or by dint of anything that gives us the opportunity to live in this country and live in this village, then we have a moral and a legal responsibility to speak for those who cannot speak for themselves. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pat Ryan. I live at 10 South Dutcher Street. And my message is very brief. I would like to thank the board and the mayor for their leadership in this effort. The very definition of leadership is to show others the way. And I believe that's what you are doing tonight. I'd also like to thank a couple of people in this room who I believe have really contributed to this effort. Tom Zachar, Peter Bernstein, and David Immora. So thank you all.
Speak for the first time, or would you go back to Lori? Sorry, Lori.
My name is David Immora. I grew up at 59 Sycamore Lane here in the village. And there have been some legal challenges to what you are doing today. And I just wanted to say that the New York Attorney General has clearly said that what we are doing today is in compliance with federal law. I actually was listening to a webinar where the New York Attorney General was directly discussing this issue. And they actually individually praised Irvington for the policies that we're implementing today, and how incredible it was that a little village like us are able to put together such a sophisticated policy that was in accordance with all federal law. So thank you so much for everything you're doing on that. One thing, though, that I really want to address is how incredible it is that you as a board have come together and put this together so quickly. You know, I never thought in 12 years of being in Irvington village politics that Irvington would lead the way on a cause like this. It amazes me that we, you know, something that started in the living rooms of people in this room has created the first immigration policy, the first sanctuary policy in Westchester County history. That is incredible to me. And it's incredible to me that Irvington has led the way on this, that Ardsley and Quin and Dobbs Ferry and Pelham and Greenberg in Westchester County are all saying, we want to follow Erbington. So I want to say thank you so much for everything that you've done, and let's take that final step forward and put together the first policy in Westchester County. So thanks.
Last week pursuant to the New York City sanctuary law, a dangerous member of the MS-13 gang was released from Rikers Island despite the issuance of a detainee request by U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement. Despite his prior record of numerous felony convictions, he was released because he was not in jail for a serious crime but rather disorderly conduct. MS-13 is the gang with 16 members who were charged last week in Brentwood, Long Island with murder and other crimes, including the gruesome slaying of seven people, two of whom were high school students killed by beating with a bat and attacked with a machete. Earlier this week, we learned that MS-13 gang members here illegally had been arrested on charges of kidnapping three girls and gruesomely murdering one of them in Houston. As your policy currently reads, "The Irvington Police will, given the same set of facts, repeat the same mistake as the Rikers Island officers and release an MS-13 gang member here illegally if only in jail for disorderly conduct." That is unacceptable, and I have yet to hear an explanation of how we prevent that. Furthermore, I'm guessing that you all have not done too much research on crime statistics in sanctuary cities despite some inaccurate crime stats being read earlier. Putting aside Chicago, the murder capital of the world, which is a sanctuary city with gang members running amok, San Francisco saw a crime surge in the years from 2011 to 2015 with the number of arrests for murder of 55% and the number of arrests for rapes of 370%. As the president of the group Judicial Watch stated, "Citizens understand that when sanctuary cities release illegal alien criminals into the streets, crime is going to increase." You all may believe that we don't have to worry about gangs and violent criminals here, but when word gets out that they are free to commit minor criminal offenses and will be released, the term sanctuary may take on new meaning to you all. I have a great deal of information on the correlation between sanctuary cities and crime rates, but given the time limit, I will go on. With regard to the impact of this policy on our communities, economy, and individual taxpayers, I have argued that there are very real financial implications that you all are ignoring. I have asked if any of you have considered what this will do to our property values as many people like me who become aware of this find places that's different places to live or flee from here. One of your jobs is to protect our property values, and yet this completely undermines that objective. Furthermore, as I've pointed out, there are at least five pieces of legislation moving through Congress notwithstanding executive orders that Trump may issue. This is not something that, as Brian, you had suggested in an email earlier today, should be revisited down the road. This is happening now in real time, which is why you all are rushing to ram this through tonight. If you thought we had wiggle room, you would have opened this up to the community. It is bizarre that you were jumping so quickly on this at the same time that Miami-Dade County, replete with immigrants both legal and illegal, recently reversed its sanctuary city policy for fear of the financial implications to the county. Those county officials didn't say they want to make a political statement and project an attitude. They did their duty and recognized the very real financial implications that would have very imminently impacted the taxpayers in their community. That you ignore this at the risk that our taxes will increase because the feds will be withdrawing funds is simply bizarre and goes to just how ideologically driven you all are rather than fulfilling your responsibilities to the taxpayers who elected you. You may argue that Congress does not have the right to withdraw funds, but the esteemed and highly respected constitutional law attorneys, David Rivkin and Elizabeth Feisvoly, concluded that Congress can require state, local, or university police to tell federal agents when they arrest an immigrant present in the country illegally. They analyzed further that, quote, "Congress can cut off funds if the conditions imposed are relevant to the federal interest in the project, and the threatened loss of money doesn't amount to a gun to the head," and concluded, quote, "The Constitution is clear that power to determine deportation policies belongs to Congress, not states, municipalities, or universities." Furthermore, a former Assistant Attorney General under both Clinton and Obama who headed the Office of Justice programs, which oversees grants to local municipalities, said that the AG has broad power to decide who gets money, stating, quote, "They could cut off drug programs, domestic violence grants, and violence against women grants." I get the sense that the board hasn't contemplated this repercussions and sees as social issues.
I would like to, in all respect, sacrifice my three minutes to Lori. No one else wants to speak?
Well, if he's supposed to go before me, that's no problem.
Well, I would like to have her continue.
Sure. Got three minutes.
Separately, the board is opening up the town to a number of possible lawsuits. The family of Kate Steinle, the 32-year-old San Francisco woman who was murdered by an illegal immigrant who found refuge in that sanctuary city, filed a lawsuit against a number of parties, including the city and council members, that is still making its way through the court system. While it will likely take years, the size of the potential reward could bankrupt our community if we were to find ourselves in a similar situation. And there is a proposal in Congress to give standing to victims and their families to civilly sue local, state, and federal officials for failing to enforce immigration laws. While you all may not worry about potentially being on the hook personally, you do have an obligation to us as taxpayers. On the other hand, San Francisco was recently sued for alleged violations of its sanctuary city ordinance. Did it ever occur to you that, at all, that by codifying this policy requires the police to strictly adhere to its every word and that any deviation can open the town to a significant lawsuit, as this one in San Francisco? In addition, the ICE director acknowledged that sanctuary city policies put federal immigration officers at risk since the policy requires the police to give the criminal notice of a detainer before releasing them into the public. That, again, opens up the town to an additional avenue of potential lawsuits. Finally, as I requested ad nauseam, the town should put off tonight's vote, provide notice to the community, and allow all residents to have their voices heard on this issue. Brian has made the case that notice is not required because this is not a law. I disagree with that, and I will look into legal action if we proceed this evening to the vote without opening this up to the full community. The actions by the board, while not approved as legislation through our customary democratic process, have the immediate effect of making a change in existing laws as well as violating federal statutes. This is an egregious overreach of authority that weakens our village as well as the voices of our citizens. I'm no expert on sanctuary cities, but I am a lawyer and I can read. Black's Law Dictionary defines administrative law as, quote, "That branch of public law which deals with the various organs of the sovereign power considered as in motion and prescribes in detail the manner of their activity being concerned with such topics as the public safety." This follows that under Section 42 of the Village Code, notice should have been given. Tonight's policy actions are clear examples of extending for political purposes the authority of the board to create law governing the actions of our police officers, our last line of defense. These actions violate our constitutional requirements governing the adoption of legislation, such as, among other things, providing for adoption by a legislative body with appropriate notice for public debate. This administrative overreach by not complying with the tenets of our legislative process are as unconstitutional as Obama's executive orders affecting immigration and the environment, which have fortunately repeatedly been struck down by courts. Why are we setting ourselves up for the same results when we know what the right thing to do here must be? Give the citizens of Irvington the right to make their voices heard on this policy change, which could have irreversible, significant repercussions for our children and fellow taxpayers? Finally, I cannot understand why the board is so hell-bent on passing this complicated legislation rather than simply issuing a one-paragraph policy statement which would have little to no impact on the safety and economy of the town, just as the mayor and Board of Trustees of Tarrytown did. There is no fear mongering here. The accusations are unfounded. No one is suggesting that you all set up traffic stops, card people, find out if they're here legally or not, bang down doors, go into restaurants, throw our housekeepers and maids and gardeners and whatnot out. The bottom line is no one's asking you to do that. What we're asking you to do is not pull on the heartstrings of Brian because you've shown this community that you will act on the interests of the few at the expense of the rest of us. That has shown that you will govern as a progressive liberal who is solely interested in promoting your own ideological agendas rather than safeguarding the life and property of Irvington residents with true and serious concerns. That you remain steadfast in not slowing this process down and opening it up to further community inputs says a great deal about all of you. And it's not good for Irvington nor for our democracy as a whole. I appreciate that there is strong support here tonight. There would be strong voices on the other side had you all given notice, given us time to allow the other side to have a voice. And I think that that is the most offensive thing about all of this. There's ways to do this that are right for the community. What's happening now, ramming this through tonight without any explanation of why it has to be voted on tonight, is just inexplicable and distressing. I also want to submit, I have another letter if you want someone to read it other than me, but there's another letter that the resident wanted to be read into the record.
Thank you.
With all due respect to Lori as a lawyer, I too am a lawyer. We've heard from quite a few lawyers who know what they're talking about. I respect them. I believe that Lori, despite her protests to the contrary, is fear mongering, talking about murder with machetes.
It happened, Mike. It happened on Long Island. Fear mongering, it's a fact.
Anecdotal. I didn't interrupt you, please don't interrupt me.
Fact is, I think what we're doing is constitutional, it's legal, we're not passing a law. We're stating a policy very clearly and unequivocally with guidance from the Attorney General of the State of New York. I think the sooner the better. All we have to do is read the newspaper every day, and we see the fear being generated in Washington by an administration that's run amok. But let's stick to Irvington. We have the right, we have the duty to do what we're doing. And there's no need to wait. We're complying with the law. The threat of the lawsuit from Lori is counterproductive. It's as counterproductive as the tone of her arguments. I've read them, I disagree with them. I think she's dead wrong. And she's a friend of mine, but I couldn't disagree with her more. I believe we should act, act promptly. It's in the best interest of all the citizens of Irvington and those who are not fortunate enough to be citizens yet. Hopefully someday, they will be.
I just want to make one quick comment on that. The Westchester County Police actually adopted almost the same policy. They didn't have any public hearings, they just put it right into their standard operating guidelines, almost verbatim policy based on the AG report. So I don't understand, you know, why they would, and I can only imagine if we just gave this policy to our police department and didn't tell anyone, then you could really say we didn't have public notice. I mean, I think this is a pretty good public notice. I think we've had Eric coverage on News 12, we've had multiple newspaper stories. I really don't think that a two-by-two ad, which is, again, completely not necessary, a two-by-two ad in the Journal Louvre or wherever we run our public notice is going to bring out any more people pro-work home.
But how do you know that? And if you don't, this is possibly a breach of statute. Notice is not required.
Notice is not required.
I don't agree with you. Notice is not required.
John Dawson, please. John Dawson, 76 Hudson Avenue. I've lived in this village for 35 years now. I, in listening to everybody this evening, I do not envy the board's position. Everybody who I have heard speak, and I'm sorry I got here late, but everybody who I have heard speak is very well-intentioned. They have good thoughts in their mind for their point of view. There is definitely not a lot of listening to each other, other than to show how one point is better than the other. The thing that I have picked up in listening is that, as a history teacher, I think we have a constitution that has worked very well for a long time. And there are methods inside of that constitution that are even more powerful than what you are about to do this evening. However well-intentioned, what we do here in Irvington is not going to play anything in Idaho. But if Mr. Immora is correct, that other places are leading us, this gives us the opportunity to push forth federal legislation with our New York delegation, but even more powerfully, to get an amendment. That ends the discussion once and for all. But I haven't heard anything other than, well, we're going to do this locally. I do agree with the point that it would be nice for the people to have a voice in this. Not that you haven't listened. You have listened. If you've not heard anything this evening, you've heard differing points of view, argued very well, I thought, on both sides. But this is a small proportion of the entire community. And you folks are taking upon yourselves something that really isn't necessary if you listen to the entire, put up a referendum, okay? Starts a push, starts a push.
Brian, you can't. You can only have a referendum on the items that the state law lets you have, and this is not something you can have.
Well, we just heard that the Attorney General has said this is all well and good.
No, no, I'm just saying you can't have a referendum. There's very specific situations you can have a referendum, because they cost taxpayers a lot of money, and this is not one of them. You can't, a village just can't decide, we've got a question, let's have a referendum. You can't unless it falls within the statute and the stuff.
We have, in the village of Irvington, done a number of things, okay, fine, no referendum. We have done a number of things to change the way things are done, not just in Irvington, but it's caught on in other places. Why are we limiting this to just Irvington's sector? Why not have Irvington really take the lead and push for something more? And hear once and for all what the nation has to say and have Irvington be the sword of it?
Who's next?
Hi, I'm Leo Lispect. I've lived on North Hudsonet Street for, I don't know, 21 years or something. I just wanted to say that in those years that I've been in Irvington, one of the things I've been beautifully impressed with is the ability of our community to come together, to listen to each other, and to solve problems together. And I saw that from my first year here, and I see it now. I see people from both sides of the aisle always coming together here to talk about issues, to find solutions, and do things that are good for our community. So I commend you and thank you for the opportunity for everybody to talk together about these issues and of the people, for the people. I'm glad that you're listening and you're formulating the right opinion for all of us.
Yeah, Paul Ficcolora, one more time. When the village wanted to put in Sina Hudson Park, they sent out surveys a few times to get everyone's opinion, and that was a park. And it seems like a no-brainer that we would all want a park. And we're all known for being one of the best villages on the river because of that park. But yet, the board and the mayor went to everyone in the village to get an opinion. And so I really believe that it is vital, because we've just witnessed here today, there is extreme disagreement on this. Although in this particular room, there is an outnumbered on one side. Although in this particular room, there is an outnumbered on one side, I believe that it is really not a bipartisan issue, and that you're going to have people from all parties voting very differently on this. And I think it's important to get the voice of the village and not just the Board and the mayor. Thank you.
I guess if people can talk... Oh, go right ahead.
Good evening, Bill Hunan. I was late to the meeting, so I don't know if some of this was covered, but apparently, I understand Lori has a lot of questions. I want to know if they were all answered, and if not, when will they be answered before you vote?
We're satisfied with our answers. Only Lori is satisfied with the answer.
Okay, well, I have answers also, or questions also, that agree with hers. And I'd like an answer, and I'd like to defer my time to her, because she has some more questions for you.
So, Brian, maybe it's best if we just walk through my question, and you all can answer them.
Honestly, I think I've seen them several times.
And they haven't been answered. And there's a lot of people that want to hear them.
They haven't been answered here, so I don't think...
No, they haven't been answered.
I think a lot of them don't frankly need answers. A lot of it's hyperbole, a lot of it's speculation, you know, what's it going to do to our housing values? I would make the case it's going to make them go off.
Brian...
I want to say that I really appreciate what you're doing. I think that you've taken a lot of time and given this a lot of thought. I think it's gone back and made myself push our village attorney hard to make sure that this is legal. She's had many, many conversations with Attorney General's office. We've looked at this probably twice as hard as we would have if you hadn't raised so many issues. So honestly, I genuinely thank you. However, that being said, I think we could stay here until 2:00 in the morning, and you're going to say that we don't provide you with the answers you want, and...
No, if you provided the answers, I would say thank you for the answer. I may disagree with it, but thank you for the answer. What I haven't gotten...
So things like, who's going to define...
No, 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 that's...
There's so many questions that just kept coming back and coming back.
Well, I'm sorry, I am a lawyer also. That's what we do. We get to the bottom of issues. I don't want to see this town sued. I don't want to see taxpayer dollar bills...
You said you're going to sue us.
Because you're not following the procedures properly, and I have to disagree with the town.
Now, don't talk over me, that's just...
You were here interrupting the other one, you don't have to.
I spoke to my friends. You're filibuster law.
Guys, we can't have time for our conversations.
I mean, see, this is so condescending and obnoxious, and I appreciate your being respectable and the Board being respectable. I did disagree with our town attorney on whether Section 42 of the village code has been satisfied, and I said that I would look into that.
And we actually checked with NICOM.
Wait, no, you're talking about Section 42 of the code? We don't have a code Section 42.
The village code provides for notice in a public hearing with the proposed new local law.
On local law. This is not a local law. It's a policy which does not have to be passed by local law.
Right, and if you listen to the tail end of my last remarks, what I was saying is that, based on, look, since law, law is not defined in the village code. If you look at Black's Law Dictionary, administrative law, this falls under purview of administrative law.
Well, no, I don't have to look at Black's Law. I've been a municipal attorney for 35 years.
I'm not saying you, I'm saying individuals.
You enact policies by resolution. And because of your raising the question several times, I thought, okay, I'll double check. And I called NICOM today, and both the head of NICOM, NICOM is the New York Conference of Mayors, and they provide advice to villagers, legal advice to villagers and other advice. And both the head of NICOM and the person who's in charge of police not only said that it does have to be by local law, they have been strongly recommending municipalities not to enact it by local law. They had a question from another Westchester municipality last week, and they want to do by local law, they encourage them not to do it by local law, but to do it by a resolution enacting a policy.
Okay, so perhaps they're being advised not to do it by local law so that you don't end up in a situation where you have to open it up to the community?
No, 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 it's because if you make it a local law, then you have to have penalties. So what are you going to do? Penalize the police because they made a mistake? That's not how you do it. The way you deal with police with any policy is if they don't follow it, if there's an issue, you have a hearing on it, or, you know, there's...
So there's still repercussions to a police who does not follow this? This is, in effect, a law that governs police behavior. My argument is whatever we call things, the question is, I still, and if you read Irene and Pete Lipsky's letter that they sent to me and asked me to read into the record, the question that so many people have that couldn't make it tonight was, why is this being rushed? Why is this so urgent that the Board must vote on it tonight?
We've been talking about this for a long time, and we don't feel...
But it didn't make it into the public purview until this past week. And while you may have been talking about it, nobody knew...
And the 56 people that signed the petition, most of which apparently are here tonight, knew about it. But the rest of us found out about it on News 12 or, you know, in last week's Enterprise. And so, you know, we, as taxpayers of decades, also believe that our voices deserve to be heard just as equally as those in favor of it.
And another good thing about a policy is that policies can be changed. It's not like it has the same waiting periods and notices and things like that. That's another reason we want to do is a policy. So again, you brought up the fact that there's a lot of changes coming from Washington. We have to adapt to those. So I think that, while this is a great policy for this period of time, if people come back and they have real issues, we're going to listen. We're here, you know, the first and third Monday and the second Wednesday of every month. And, you know, there was another letter I'm going to read was calling this an ad hoc meeting or something. This is a regular scheduled meeting that we set back on December 1st. So, you know, there's a lot of it that seems a little disingenuous that we're trying to sneak this through. But honestly, with policy, we didn't even have to have a public hearing. I actually, the police report to me as mayor, I could say this is the policy and said, chief, enact it. Didn't ask anybody. Didn't ask, we met with the police, we met with the police lieutenant, with the chief, we stopped some line officers, we got their opinion on it. You know, there's a lot of things I could have done if I really wanted to just be this vashing of liberalness and said, this is my policy, and here it is. And frankly, you probably never would have heard about it, because this would have been a police...
Well, you would have heard about it because you guys were on the news and getting interviews in the local papers.
I could have skipped all of that, and I could have just made the policy.
But you didn't, because you're very proud of what, and you've got a supportive crowd here, you're very proud of what you're about to do. But again, there are, you know, there are people who have residence of Irvington for decades whose voices unfortunately could not be heard tonight and don't agree. Whether you, you can't put it forward for a referendum, I'm saddened to hear about that because that was my first suggestion. But the questions that I have still go to issues that have yet to be addressed, like how do we prevail what happened in Rikers Island?
Because we don't have a detention facility here, so we don't have a jail or something to be released. We would go on a criminal track quickly, and then they get sent off to Westchester County.
I know people that have been held here and fingerprinted here.
Oh, you get fingerprinted here, but we don't have a holding facility. It's very simple.
Actually, I just wanted to explain to you, I think there was a misunderstanding. What happened in New York wouldn't happen under this policy. Because under this policy, it says that the police can, it actually limits to one stage, when they can respond to a detainee request, one is if there's a judicial warrant. The second one is if there's probable cause to believe that the person left the country and came back and was deported, and at any time was convicted of a set of serious crimes, felonies. Now, you said this person had been convicted of a number of felonies, violent felonies previously. Their person, under this policy, would have to be held.
That's not, I don't have it in front of me, that's, I did not, what I read...
New York City may have a different policy than...
No, but what I read in this, and...
And if I could look at yours, I mean, what I read in this was that...
Sure. Lori, why don't you read that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Please. My name is Alexander Russe. I'm a relatively new resident here, about three years, four years. I wanted to say a couple of things about this. I came just to see what the Board meeting looks like and the community.
Usually not this fast.
I think everybody in this room is in agreement that they want a safe community. There's no disagreement on that point. Safety is something that everybody wants. It doesn't come into what this statement is about. It's not contradictory in any way. To me, a lot of discussion has been about the legal aspect of this. This is a humanitarian statement. This is, above all, what this community stands for, and it's more humanitarian as a policy than a law. So I wanted to congratulate you for putting this together and to applaud. And Lori has made every valid example of what could go wrong. These are examples that can happen anywhere, at any place, in any city. A crime can be committed by a local guy, by any person. So those are really isolated examples that simply don't make me feel insecure or fearing or contradictory to this policy. I would also add that this gentleman made the best statement of the night. We're all immigrants. I'm an immigrant myself. I came here in the mid-'80s. I'm also a lawyer, by the way. And...
Stick to what you're looking for.
Just as a reminder that at one point, Irish Americans were treated inhumanly here. At one point, Italian Americans were treated inhumanly here. Jewish Americans were treated without any kind of respect here. So let's not repeat the same mistakes over and over again. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Peter Bernstein from 17 North Cottonet. My intention was to, one day, I'm 60 years old, I still haven't successfully made it through a meeting, keeping my mouth shut. I was really trying tonight, because I know there were so many people here speaking so articulately, but I just can't do it. You know, when Mr. Harry Michael was talking about his grandparents, you know, one of me and my grandparents, all four of whom were immigrants, some of whom came illegally, some of whom didn't, but they came for the same purpose, to sacrifice themselves, to risk their own lives for their children and their grandchildren who appreciate it. And the one thing I kind of, I love Irvington, the one thing that I think we need is more diversity, and, you know, Westchester's interesting because we kind of live in our little communities, and I don't feel in my time in Westchester that I've gotten enough time, enough opportunity to meet different people. For the last few years, I have gotten to meet the immigrant communities in Osning and elsewhere. And you know who they remind me of? They remind me of my grandparents. What they do is that they wake up every morning and take care of their kids, they work hard all day long, six days a week. On Sunday, they go to church. And Sunday afternoon, they all have a meal together. They take care of their old people, they're proud of their children. And what's going to happen with their children? I was with somebody recently who came here and she cleaned houses. She's not legal. Her daughter is likely getting a scholarship to MIT next year. And, you know, that benefits all of us. Like, I wish we all could, you know, regardless of how this goes, like, you know, have the empathy and the compassion and get to know our neighbors, who were hard-working people just trying to do right by their families. So I thank the Board for understanding that, you know, we're all, we all want the same things, and that everybody deserves to feel welcome in Westchester. Thank you.
I'm just going to follow up with my discussion with Mary Ann. And the Rikers Island situation is not protected under this legislation. The guy had prior convictions, but he wasn't, as far as I know, deported and snuck back in the way that Kate Steinle's murderer did. He, there was a deportation, well, a detainee request that was ignored based on the New York City sanctuary law, which I believe looks very similar to ours, and that provides, ours provides, and this I can't comprehend, that we are going to be giving notice to anybody who is being held of a detainer, and then we release them into the wild. So that's the issue I haven't...
If they're only, if they're only things that they...
And this guy's was disorderly conduct. I mean, it was disorderly conduct. I know you're rolling your eyes, but you know what these things happen.
I'm rolling my eyes, but yes, that's one example. And I'm sure, you know, I could talk about a million people who are so great, and that's not the point. The point is, this could happen. And, you know, it could happen with a, we could let someone go that's an American citizen for 75 generations, and we could have a Native American in custody that we didn't know was a gang member.
But that's not what we're talking about. Right now, we're talking about a situation that we can control, where the federal government knows that this is a bad person that's been convicted of multiple felonies.
If they had a probable cause that he was, then we'd hold him.
You're requiring a judicial warrant, which is not the way right now it works.
That's not true.
The legislation requires, if you look at it, it does, it requires a judicial warrant.
We don't know whether that person had left the country before or not, but if they left... And generally, these, I don't know about this particular case, but in these cases, the people, they talk about them having been deported four or five times and coming back.
I mean, all I'm saying is that a little bit more time would allow this to be drafted... Look, I like the Tarrytown mayor's statement. It's one paragraph. It makes everybody here feel good that we're a welcoming city, that immigrants are welcome here, legal or not. By the way, everybody refers to all of us as immigrants. I believe all of our families came here legally, but apparently that...
Mine did.
No, I know, but no, but there's a difference. The law addresses illegal immigrants, not legal immigrants. This is not about legal immigrants.
It happens to be Native American, only you get out.
The point is, you know, I find, again, and Lipsky's letter, and a number of other people who have sent some emails, like Ted Brown, are very concerned about how quickly you're rushing this through without actually thinking about the legislation. I read that the gentleman over here drafted the legislation, with all due respect, congratulations, Paul.
That's not true.
You're an independent or...
He might have drafted, he drafted publicly, we got a public office, right for us.
So, you know, again, I reiterate my request that you give us more time for people to process and make sure that it's drafted the proper way and not rush it through.
Thank you.
I haven't spoken yet. Lickie Cottington, I live at 57 Hillside Terrace. I will have been here 25 years this summer. And I want to, first of all, thank you for doing this. I totally support what you're doing. I'm not going to go into any of the, you know, discussion about the benefits or legal part, I'm not a lawyer. But I do think you've given plenty of notice. I mean, this is not official public notice, but this is now the third public board meeting, right? Where you've discussed this issue. It's been in the paper. I think if anybody is not paying attention, you know, they've had their chance. It's been widely publicly discussed. I want to go, though, to the issue of safety, because I feel that's where, like I'm searching for common ground with the people who are opposing this. We all want public safety, and I would like to just repeat what was said earlier by law enforcement associations, that the issue of confidence and trust in police can only be increased by this kind of measure, because what we don't want is to have people afraid to report something to the police. And I think we are all safer if there's a level of trust and confidence in our local police force. Thank you.
I just want to say, we have meetings every Monday, the first Monday, the second Monday, we go to see one-tenth of you of those.
One of the refreshments, thank you.
We didn't eat them tonight. We usually have doughnuts and a side of beef.
Robbie, please.
Does anyone else like to speak, or do we have the Board members?
I keep getting pushed closer to the microphone.
Okay, great.
No, I'm just teasing.
Otherwise, I think we should hear from our Board members. We usually start on this end, but when we start on this end, maybe it's for a second time.
Mark's asleep. Reacting to taking cops a person.
Thanks for not bothering me. Auxiliary water around, right?
You're making me go first this time. How about our deputy mayor goes first?
I don't care. This is what democracy looks like. I'm very, very happy to see so many people here. We do listen. I've been on the Board since 2009. I have great rapport with my colleagues. I believe that this is one place where neighbors talk to neighbors, information is shared, and people who feel passionate about things come and speak up about them. I truly... I truly, I truly listen. I think when all of us are elected by the population here in Irvington, people do look at, I'm gonna use the word, character, or who we are. And I think we are asked to bring our values, our morals, our sense of community to our job. We listen, but I don't think, in general, it's not a matter of making decisions based on a poll. I think we, we all believe that our own values are something we should bring to how we govern. With that in mind, I'm not embarrassed or would take back anything I said on Channel 12 News about the values that I think we impart to the kids who are growing up here. I think, I think our kids need to hear that we stand for something, and at this moment, I think something that speaks to safety, as has been spoken of so far, and speaks to what's legal in New York State, is a good way to put together all of those pieces. I have great respect for our village attorney, who has looked at this language with a fine-toothed comb, going through every line to make sure that this is the kind of law that, not law, resolution, that will stand up, say what we wanna say, and I'm very pleased with where we are at this moment. I'm not an attorney here, but I, I can read, and I've looked at this as carefully as I know how. I've asked questions about the different lines in it. I've thought about this a great deal. I've thought about when, in November, we made a statement about tolerance, right? When Andrew Cuomo had a letter, we asked that it be read into the record here, it's on our website. So, that issue of who we are as a community, well, it's been on my mind since I was first on the board. But I'm gonna say that I don't feel like, I've rushed through this, I feel like I've looked at it very carefully. I think there's been a great deal of public knowledge that this is awareness, that we are about to do this. So, I'm comfortable with supporting this resolution tonight. I think it's timely, and I appreciate all your coming and all your thoughtful comments.
Would you like to go, Janice?
Yes, now I'd like to. You've all been so eloquent, it's really, really hard to start speaking now, but there are a couple of points I do wanna make very briefly. First of all, as we've said over and over again, this resolution is fully authorized by the Attorney General guidelines. It's consistent with what's happening in our neighboring communities, other communities across the state, and in other states. Secondly, we are not condoning criminal behavior. I had that lying around, that is not what we're doing here. People who commit crimes will still be subject to prosecution. This applies in only one instance. We're undocumented immigrants. We are simply declining to assist the federal government, federal agents, by honoring detainee warrants without judicial warrant or some of the pre-existing circumstances that Mary Ann spelled out. The real issue here is what kind of community are we? And this is a community that has a statement of tolerance, right on the first page of our village website. This is a community that adopted affordable housing initiatives. That's how I got started, working for Affordable Housing. Peter came along and working on that committee, too. Prior board members publicly decried demeaning statements about healthcare workers made by residents of this community. People who live here continually contribute to funds to help our less blow-off neighbors at Christmas, at Thanksgiving, in all scholarships to camp. And honestly, every day, you cannot go up and down the street of this village without witnessing acts of kindness and generosity, only connect. This is about who we are, who we show our children we are, who we show, forgive me, David, but the enthusiastic young people who involve themselves. You have been practicing for 16-years, did you say? Since you were 12? But that's why we're doing this, okay? So let's look at the other part of this. Who are they? Who are these immigrants? Why are they here? We all know why they're here. Most of them are fleeing destitution in desperate circumstances. They're seeking a safe and secure life. We've said, this has been said several times, they're not so different from the immigration stories of the forebears of all of us. Most of us learn this in school, but Statue of Liberty stands there, New York Harbor, she's the beacon, right? And she says, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, y'all could probably recite it, but she says, "Give me, you're tired, you're poor, send these, the homeless, the tempests tossed to me." And right now, another monument to our, to you, to our country, currently playing on Broadway, Hamilton, every night, they come out and say, "Immigrants, we get the job done." Immigrants have been a vital part of our economy and culture, nationally and locally. As we grapple with how to respond to what's happening nationally, and that's the urgency for passing this now, because of what's happening nationally, because every day you can't read the papers without reading about somebody who's been picked up and deported. That's why we're doing this now. We have the opportunity to take a stand for what we value here. We can move beyond us versus them and determine who we are. We welcome, respect, and protect all our residents, employees, visitors, and people driving through here. Tonight, we adopted, hopefully, we plan on adopting, we will consider adopting a resolution, fully supported by our police department that commits us to do just that. Respect and protect all our residents, employees, and visitors. It is an honor for me to be a part of this process. Thank you all.
You wish you went first now, Mark.
Well, I'm the new one on the board. It's been an interesting first three months. I'm not a lawyer, but I do wanna thank Mary Ann for how hard she's worked on this, how we sponsored... And, and willing to explain and to adjust as we've had questions and I've had questions. You know, I was asked to run and agreed to run, and was voted into office, and I believe it, you know, it's not just to represent the thoughts of our residents, but also to help to lead, to do the right thing, to do what's right and what's true. I don't think that we're rushing this, but I do think that there's a sense of urgency, as been, you know, has been said before. I think we're not pushing anything through, but I, but I do feel that the passing of this resolution is going to allow people in our village to rest more easily. I think that's the word.
I have to apologize, I have a bad cold, so my head is not very clear tonight, it's just very stuffy. But what I wanted, what I've been thinking about in terms of this a lot is the, you know, past history where we, you know, before World War II, for instance, where there's a ability to start, there was a process of starting to remove rights from the most vulnerable and least powerful sections of the community. And, you know, one group got disenfranchised, another group, and another group, and sort of spreading to the point there was only, you know, you had to pass certain tests to be able to be a full citizen. I'm speaking, unfortunately, about in the rise of power in Germany before World War II. Here, I think, you know, one of the analogies that have been brought up was the internment camps for the Japanese in this country. Another kind of very disturbing process of going out after, you know, vulnerable, disenfranchised, or whatever, lesser powerful. I think that when I look out now, in this current administration in Washington, I see this happening, a process of trying to pit one group against another group, and it's looked at some way as a zero-sum game, and, you know, the only way that everyone can have a viable, successful life and, you know, provide for their children, is if you pit one group against another and start to eliminate the least, the least powerful, the most vulnerable. So anyways, what am I gonna say after that? I just am happy to be part of this. I totally agree with what everyone was saying. Thank you, Janice, for, and Connie, Larry, I'm sure Brian will say something. We wanted to thank Mary Ann as well for all the time she spent. And then, of course, the Irvington activist group who brought this forward to us. And, that's it. Thank you.
I had one large question when I started looking at this legislation, and that was, are we gonna be preventing our police department from doing their job, and it's gonna make us less safe? And I think that, to me, when I sat down with our, our police chief and our police intendant, and they said, A, this isn't really gonna change how we do our jobs, this is how, you know, again, they're doing it for 40-years. And then they did talk about how they thought that this would allow people that, or again, the most... Come forward and say that, you know, my, my wife's been beating me up and I need an word of protection, whatever it is, they wouldn't, they wouldn't hesitate to come forward to our police department. And I think one of the things we pride ourselves on is that our police department is truly one of the greatest police departments in the world, and I'll tell you why. It's not that they're well-trained, they are. It's not that they're well-led, they are. It's that they all really, really care about our community. And a lot of them are locals, but even the ones that aren't love this community. I think we're, one of our greatest advantages and why I think our schools are so great, is our police department and our youth officers are such an integral part of our, of our schools. And we have coaches, you know, several of our police officers coach football and other sports, baseball, lacrosse. The difference with that is, is that if you have an issue, whether it's yourself and you're incriminating yourself, they'll go forward to Officer Tool and or Officer Seaman and say, "Listen, I'm in over my head." If they have a friend who had too much to drink, they don't say, "Oh, jeez, let's turn him on aside." I gotta tell you, I went to high school here. If one of my friends drank too much, we would turn him on aside and said, "Make sure he doesn't, you know, choke on his own vomit." That would be caring Smith back then. They don't hesitate to call the police. And I think that that's a huge shift. And some people say, "Oh, it's terrible, they're, you know, they're drinking." Yeah, it is terrible, and it's not safe, and that's obviously, that's a very dangerous thing. But the difference is, they can approach the police. And when I was in one of our local restaurants, and I had a busboy who I always try to practice my terrible Spanish on, came up to me and said...
Hey, hey, watch that.
Oh, it's not her fault. His, his wife was my teacher for just 40-years. I capped out in high school, so. But to me, it's one of my favorite things. We talk, I'm a big soccer fan, and we talk about football and other things, and he looked at me and said in perfect English, "Are you gonna send your police department to send me back home?" And I gotta tell you, my son looked at me like, "You would do that?" And, and I was like, you know, first of all... And then, when I started reading, this was, this was probably like January, you know, 15th or something, and you started reading these things. That was one of the things to me that, I saw that disconnect immediately, that that person was not gonna be calling Officer Tool and Detective Tool and say, you know, "I saw a guy do something bad." You know, that's to me the part of this that is a huge benefit to the village. There's a lot of people who have immigration status that aren't necessarily perfect, that live around us or work around us. I don't want them ever to hesitate to call in the police, and I, and I think that this law is a very strong message to do that. Because I have looked at some of the one-pagers and the one-paragraph laws, and frankly, they're not specific enough.
Laws.
Not laws, policies, sorry. And I looked at them, and when I look at them, I, I say, "If I was a police officer, I wouldn't know what any of this meant, with detention requests. What does that mean?" To me, it sounds official, and they call them detention warrants, and they have all different names, but they're really the same thing. And we think in some ways they intentionally do that to make it kinda confusing, and how often have we gotten known new, so infrequent? But now we think it might become more frequent, and if it does, we want them to say, "What is it? Someone has a judicial warrant, hold them." You know, whatever it is, we want it to be very clear. So I think that there's some real practical reasons. And another very practical reason is, we typically, most times of the day, only have two people on patrol, and if they're suddenly de facto ICE agents, they're taking away from their primary duty. Same as I wouldn't want them to be de facto SEC agents going down to investigate the hedge fund on Bray Street. Where it's, it's, we have to focus on enforcing our local laws and our speeding and our pedestrian safety and all those things. That's our primary focus, and we don't wanna be sidetracked on some of this stuff. You know, I think I'm also surprised that we are first on this, because to me, it seems like such a common sense approach. The Attorney General issued this guidance back in January 20th. I've had a lot of mayors reach out in the last few days to ask me to send us, send them our policy, because they don't wanna frankly do the hard work. But, you know, I think, I keep saying this, one of the silver linings of the current administration in Washington is that we have come together. Whether we're coming together to argue, and honestly, everyone here, there's very few times tonight where we couldn't be really proud of our discourse, and I think everyone was respectful, and everyone spoke very well. And, you know, Lori, I thank you for strongly taking the opposite side of this, and honestly, it's, I'm much more comfortable with the law than I was a week ago. Not because anything was different, but because I asked a lot more questions of Mary Ann. Mary Ann explained it to me, I said, "Well, what about this? What about this?" And that's, that's to me what, you know, gives me full confidence in this law, beyond the Attorney General, beyond the fact that the Western states have done the same thing. You know, so I think at the end of the day, it's the right thing. And if, if people find things we need to add or things we need to take out, we're open to it. We want this to be a great policy as well, just like all of our policies. Things like, you know, not bagging your leaves, or bagging your... Those are policies that, you know, we still get input on, and sometimes we agree, sometimes we disagree. And I think the last thing is that we're a representative democracy. You have, you have actually chosen the five of us to be in front of you, so we've made those decisions. And there is a referendum, and it's in November. So, if you don't like the job we're doing, then, you know, it's open. You know, my wife would be very happy. So, you know, it's, 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 this isn't, these aren't easy seats to be in, and this is stuff that's, you know, not our typical, you know, we could talk about budgets for hours, I can if you want, but this is types of things that, there is a bit of a statement to it, because we could just say, you know, we could issue a kind of a weak policy and move on, and, you know, as someone said, make the, make the people happy that were upset. That's not what we wanna do. If we're gonna spend the time to do something like this, we wanna have the best policy we can. We're happy to be the role model for someone else. And that's where we are tonight, I think. I think we've come a long way in a month on this stuff. We've all learned a lot about immigration law and ICE policies and police departments and our policies, and a lot of that's because of all of you, all of you, and you asking us questions. So, we thank you all for that. So, I think everyone's gotten a copy of the policy, so I don't have to read the entire thing. It's all right. Harry wants me to read the whole thing. So, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve the policy, as stated, on the February 28th, 2017 version. Can I get a second now?
Name of the policy is?
Statement of Policy on the Village of Irvington on Immigration Enforcement and Discrimination. Can I get a second now?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We really do have meetings every... Oh, wait, one thing before anyone leaves, make sure you're signed up for the email blast. That's the best way to find out. You go to... You go to irvington.com, notify me.
I've got one in my pocket.
He's right.
Yeah.
We can get an air.
I've got one in my pocket.
I know, we have to do.
I follow?
Yes.
Go, Dave.
I got it.
I got it.
I've 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 got it.
You have one out?
Yeah, there is. We're looking for specific events.
So announcements?
Yes, okay.
I have to fill out.
Fill.
So he's going to do it.
Close the door, sold.
So, uh... There was one check over $25,000, which was actually a big one.
Okay.
Back in session.
I've learned to report a two.
Yeah, there's a second one. There's a second one, yeah. Uh, the other one was... It was a... It was three or so checks. I went on to the second announcement. Which is, uh, there's a public hearing to consider local law amending the Irvington Code with respect to solar energy equipment and shared solar projects that's scheduled for March 20th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Did you want to give a quick...
Just, just very briefly. I guess it was the last meeting, or maybe it was la... last month. The night the board of trustees was adopting the regulations for solar energy equipment, um, which in general is permitted only, the solar energy is permitted only for the residents or users of the premises. Some but raised the issue of shared solar projects, um, but they would only be in the non-residential districts. So what this amendment does is has a provision both for the business district and the railroad district saying that you could have, um, community distributed generated, also called shared solar projects approved by the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority. And the reason it's only in the business and railroad district, the way that, um, the use is read is it says anything is permitted in the waterfront district except for through...
Very good.
Wild waterfront, huh?
I will make a, uh, motion to have the public hearing on March 20th, 2017. Second.
Second.
All in favor. I have the chance. Oh, yes. I know the first check was, uh, for $228,587.15 for a new three-wheel street sweeper. The four-wheel one was even more expensive.
Say, say one quarter when you give up one new.
I assume this was, this was from the capital budget. I assume it was about what we thought we'd pay for it.
Yes.
And then there's another one for 20...
$28,175.95, which is MEI Services, which is the interior operating of the...
The LA United, yeah. And I think it was actually a couple of different taxes. A couple of different losses you rolled.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it for that.
Okay, the standard quick announcements.
Sure.
Yeah, for levity's sake. Just wanted to mention that we do have a program ongoing. It will go into the future for who knows how long, but part of it is, uh, traffic calming, slowdown Irvington and the initiative we've been focused on, on since the beginning of the school year has been to the Walk Safe Initiative, which is why the sign is out front of the dais. At the, uh, up in the village hall, there's things like, uh, up stickers and some posters and other things like that. But the really interesting item is our free reflectors. So if you're out there running in the early morning or, or walking your dog, uh, or your kids are coming home, uh, late, but it's still not quite, uh, you know, we're, we're just going into daylight savings time on Sunday, but it's still, uh, a lot of kids can be out on the street where it's dark, commuters from the train. Make you, uh, visible to drivers and ensure your safety a little bit better. These are available, uh, like I said, for free in the, uh, uh, village administrator's office, in the police department, and at the rec center. And they were donated to us by Phelps Hospital. So thank you to them.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Any public comment? Items out on the agenda? All right. To talk about the statement on every occasion. Uh, I will open a public hearing. No consent agenda. I already had it checked off. Uh, anyone have any questions on the consent agenda? I wasn't at the, uh, so I can't comment on the notes. As I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Now I will make a motion to open a public hearing, consider local law amending Chapter 9. We're about to text your review of the Village Code with respect to demolition of a substantial portion of a building. You have a second?
Second.
We're open.
Do you want me to stand for it?
Yes, please.
Yeah, but what this does is it provides, um, criteria and a modification of the application requirements for the demolition of a building when only a portion of the building is being demolished. The regulations were written with, in the context of an entire building being taken down. But under the definition of demolition, it can only be part of a building. If the building's facing, um, um, a main street, facing a street, then, um, if part of it's coming down, that's a demolition. And the standards didn't work for that. So we added a criteria that says, um, this is a criteria for the ARB, that where the demolition is of a substantial portion of a building, rather than of the entire building, the applicant must demonstrate that the demolition... ...that it will not be incompatible with the historic character of the building nor of the historic district. Um, there's also a couple of changes in the filing requirements where only a portion of the building is sought to be demolished. Photographs of the building in its existing condition and of adjacent buildings that have to be submitted. And then it also provides that the ARB can waive the provision of some of the information required, um, if, if it doesn't believe as best as you know. You don't have to provide information about you trying to market the house because it's, it's not, it's not really relevant if you're only taking down a portion of the building. And then lastly, it clarifies, um, that it's the building inspector that issues a, um, a permit for demolition on the ARB.
Is the board have any, uh, comments on this? No, just it was a necessary change because there was just kind of a, a disconnect or an oversight. What will probably be the most common, uh, practice, which will be partial removal, partial demolition.
And Rick did. Every year you have any...
I didn't have any, any, uh, negative comments. I just wanted to thank, uh, Mary Ann and the board for reviewing the policy and, uh, making the changes because as you know, our hands are tied on certain issues. Uh, it didn't address other issues that no one could have foreseen, so we want to thank you for, uh, clearing that up, especially, you know, having the ability to ask for, or ask for drawings, uh, of what's there now and what they want to do to clearly, you know, uh, describe what it is, what it is they want to do and the fact that, um, the building inquiry will now, um, pass it back to us for us to, to approve it. So once again, to catch money for this company. Just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you.
I thi... I think it's a good example of, you know, making adjustments. As you were reminding you earlier in the evening, sometimes, you know, we, we work something through and if there's a little glitch or... We come back to it and we fix it. So that's what this is. So I'm perfectly comfortable with this.
Any other comment? If, if not, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Resolve to adopt the local law amending Chapter 9, word of architecture review of the Village Code with respect to demolition of a substantial portion of a building in historic overlay district. I'll make a motion. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor. I'll call Lisa Laveras and tell us the nonsense. Next up is a public hearing to consider local law amending Chapter 213 of the Village Code, vehicles and traffic with respect to parking in municipal parking lot on the north side of Hudson Road West. Larry, this is you.
So, yeah, this is just a, another one of those adjustments. Um, the, the law, as it currently reads, allows for, um, permit parking adjacent to the Ardsley Country Club Tennis Courts on Hudson Road West. But it also allows for cars without permits to park for six hours. And we're adjusting that down to three hours, uh, because the six hours poses a, a bit of an issue with enforcement. So we need to tighten up the enforcement out there a bit. But yet it doesn't affect the operations of the tennis courts. It's been in correspondence with the, with the country club on that. So the three hours looks like a reasonable number. There can still be people parking there that are using the Mercy College campus, even though the special permit requires, I believe, requires Mercy to ensure, take steps to, to make sure that people don't park there for their campus. But, you know, people, people do at times. But the three hours will help curtail that somewhat.
Yeah, I think this goes back even step further to, um, are trying to be proactive with issuing as many permits and getting through that, that list as, as quickly as possible. And, and frankly, there was a, um, as you said, the enforcement issue is that when it was six hours, you had to basically send the enforcement, parking enforcement officer mainly over there, taking away from kind of the downtown and other more...
First thing's morning.
Exactly. And it was, it, then you had to go back. Um, so his hands were kind of tied.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think this gives him, you know, more flexibility. We can focus on other areas, uh, at, at the same time, kind of figure out how many people are using it. That's all I'd say about that. Anyone else have any, uh, comments from the board? On this one?
Nobody wants to take it?
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Many thanks for me.
I will make, uh, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Uh, resolve to adopt the local law amending Chapter 213 of the Village Code, vehicles and traffic with respect to parking in the municipal parking area on the other side of Hudson Road West. I will make a motion. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Renewal of a labor, labor council retainer agreement. Defer to Larry again.
Yeah, so this is a continuation of the existing contract that we have, a retainer agreement with our labor council. Um, the negotiations with both unions continue and, uh, it's essentially on the same terms, so we're in the previous retainer.
We think that there is an emergency now to get those, both those contracts passed. So we think we've been working in the background for a while and we're hopefully close situations. Any questions or comments on this?
I guess the... The only question was the question that came around from, uh, in Chris's email. That we're getting the value from this. The problem with the retainer is if you're paying more than what you're getting from it, you know? And obviously the, we, the break even point, I don't know what that is, so, I mean, I know what the number is, but I don't know what that entails in terms of this effort. Have we been paying him more than the retainer fee at this point?
No, we're not paying more than the retainer fee. There are other matters that we've consulted on that are outside the retainer, so that is not a part of it. Um, we've used up a significant portion of the retainer related to the police negotiations and less so for the CSN negotiations. There's not an issue with value.
If, am I correct, if you do the math and given the hourly rates, because that's what lawyers charge, this is really just a few hours a month. Right, so this is something and they're doing primarily the, the contract negotiations assisting with that?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're running the, the contract negotiations, um, for both unions.
Where do we stand on that, by the way? Yeah, you can't talk now.
I can give you an update, please. In fact, next meeting you'll have an update from your labor council. Resolve to renew the retainer agreement with the firm of Bond, Schlottnich and King for the Labor Council Services and Authorization Village Administrator Execute Contract. I'll make a motion. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Prove of the contract 2735 Ferguson Malone Architecture. Can you give us the background on that, too, Larry?
Would you like to do it, or would you like it? Your parlay liaison.
Oh.
Sure.
But it, it's, it relates to the theater.
Right. So, um, I think everybody, at least on the board, has seen some conceptual pictures, um, related to the, um, I'll call it the entrance to... The long, you know, uh, unaggressive, um, long-term view of the role of the theater to the economy and the viability of the village. It's a strong, um, place in, in, in the identity and the, um, the, the life of the village here. So, uh, this is in a, um, with the support of the, um, the Theater Commission, this, uh, study. In order to move forward on it, first you need a feasibility study. You can't do fundraising really for a feasibility study. You can, once you have, uh, some more, um, I've described it as a further along project, you can really do effective fundraising for the project. So, um, this would be the first step, but it doesn't... The other steps, but without it, you can't move forward. Is that a fair discussion?
And this was, this was funded specifically in your capital budget?
Yes. Right, I'm sorry. That was an important part. We already, we already did that.
A question, did we consider candidates, this is obviously a local firm, did we consider candidates outside of Irvington? Were these the only, was this the only firm interested in doing this?
I'm not. I wasn't involved in those discussions. I'm processing the contract on behalf of the mayor. I think the answer's no, but...
I, yeah, I mean, there was a lot of, um, you know, uh, communication and in a sense almost volunteer work that went into getting to that point. Um, and then there was a lot of discussion about, could we actually move forward with fundraising? And we just couldn't move forward, even though there's essentially a committee and a chairperson ready to do fundraising. But as I said, the professional fundraiser side said, you can't ask people to give money for a feasibility study. So we put that into our capital budget and, um, uh, this was the request that, uh, that this firm be the ones to do it. They'd actually already made a, a conceptual drawing.
They'd put it in time.
Yeah, they already put it in time.
But the number came from them, is my question?
Yes.
What I would suggest, though, is in this instance, um, first of all, as you probably know, under purchasing, the laws for purchasing for the village, that there is no requirement to do competitive on professional services. That's the first thing. But we do have a history of, of frequently doing competitive, uh, requests for proposals. In this instance, I think it is perfectly appropriate, given the conceptual work that was done, going directly to this. Now, one thing I will say, though, is that, um, and I'm not the one who decides this, of course, but my recommendation is that if there is any significant work done beyond this, whether it's in the, uh, you know, if, if the project does progress to a construction point or that, I think it'll be a much bigger contract for professional services and you probably should look at it competitively.
Right.
So that's, again, you know, but for the, the conceptual analysis part of it that they're doing now, I think it's, uh, it's appropriate.
That was, uh, you know, I'm excited to move this forward. We've been talking about doing this and, and I think, uh, I've talked to some people who are really very interested in fundraising.
Yeah, exactly.
You need something to, to fundraise for. You can't fundraise for a...
A feasibility study.
A feasibility study or, yeah, a, a concept. It's very hard to have, for the concept before it's a concept, um, to...
A lot of, a lot of thought, Connie, for this one.
And it's going to be a big fundraising effort.
Yes.
Probably worth a million dollars, maybe two million dollars, so. Step one. Resolve to approve contract 201705 Ferguson Malone Architecture for Professional Services regarding the feasibility study for the proposed improvements to the Irvington Town Hall Theater and to authorize the Village Administrator Execute Contract. Someone like to make a motion? Name of Connie?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Second.
All in favor. I do it so often.
Go theater. Anybody like to give a million dollars after this is finished? Just kidding.
Motion defeated.
Reports to four standing committees and officers.
Well, the only, uh, report that I want to give right now is that, um, we received, uh, a sadly, received a, a retirement resignation letter from Jerry Shapiro, uh, who's been very active in the village in several, many areas. Tree Commission, Mutigation Committee, uh, the O'Hara Nature Center, uh, Gardens, uh, and I don't know what else she's been, uh, involved in, but it's, uh, uh, sorry to see her go. She's been quite, uh, quite a, a great asset in all those various roles that she's played, uh, for the village. So, thank you, Jerry, and, uh, yeah. I guess that brings me to the second comment is, the Tree Commission is looking for additional, uh, volunteers.
Really? No one.
So, if you are interested, or if you have ideas of people who might be interested?
Your head is so foggy, you didn't even see my hand.
So if that's true, what would be good is, uh, contact Larry and he'll forward it to Alan.
Or thinks he's hallucinating, always volunteer for the...
I was over here coughing. So, yeah.
You should have done this, but there were 45 people here.
Well, we should have.
Yeah.
Should have, would have, could have, but we didn't go in the order of the agenda. So anyways, thank you. So, uh, what I would just suggest is, um, the, actually, the next meeting is, it's, they meet two, uh, every other, first, I'm going to say the first and third Tuesdays. Or is it the second and fourth? What is tomorrow? Tomorrow is a Tuesday, right?
Correct.
And they're meeting Tuesday.
He's got a cold. Don't, don't ask him.
It is the first and third Tuesdays. I just had to check the calendar. Uh, and, um, yeah, because it's a late Tuesday, right? I mean, it's the, the first is Wednesday, so it makes it push it. We're, are a weekend of the month.
Just confused me now.
Anyway, so they meet at 7:15 in the local history room of the library.
Yeah, this is, tomorrow is definitely the first.
Tomorrow is the, yeah, tomorrow is that. And it would be great to...
I can't wait tomorrow.
Okay, well then, come to follow, uh, come the...
We'll be at 21st.
We'll be in touch. Send her email.
All the work, you know she's on our, our code modernization group.
Right, right. You can, you got her email, right?
Yes, thank you for the schedule in advance, because the other one was not far enough in advance for me. I wasn't available.
So I guess the only thing else we could say is the code, oh, well, we had a good meeting of the code modernization, uh, working group for the, uh, coverage plan update.
You had another one after Saturday?
No, we did, that one on Saturday.
Oh, okay. I was like, yeah, you guys are really...
We have one coming up on Wednesday, actually.
That's pretty good. Every Thursday after that. It's pretty good.
Okay.
Excellent. Well done.
All right, so I'm done. I will cherry pick out of the 18 points that Joe gave me. But, but, but you know, what I'm going to do is I'm... Joe's next sort of 10 days are like, he has a face committee meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. He has a recreational parks advisory committee Wednesday, March 17th at 7:00 PM. He has an Irvington Woods Committee meeting Thursday, March 16th at 7:00 PM. He has a CAD meeting on March 21st at 8:00 AM. And that's just the next sort of 10 days or so.
And a village board work session on March 15th.
And a village board work session, along with...
The back.
Yes. On the 15th.
Back to back.
There was also a housing committee meeting on Tuesday, March 21st at 7:30 PM. Don't beat the geese.
Don't beat the geese.
One last thing, Eileen Fisher Learning Institute, they've been great corporate citizens. They'll have their second color, the third additional information to...
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Whoa. Mr. Smith. Greg Allen reports, uh, as I reported the, the last meeting, this Best of Film series, the French famous Isabel, who can't do that one. She's starring in Things to Come. So pack the theater, uh, this Friday night, this very Friday night at 7:30. Um, and then next Saturday night, Clock Towers, uh, with their adult musical, Beauty and the Beast, which runs for two weekends. And the...
There's a film set, there's nothing.
Say it again? Are you with it?
No, no, never mind. I'm sorry.
Beauty or Beast?
I'll be in the middle.
Okay.
It's slightly above average.
Okay. March 11th is the farmer's market. It's, um, you know, it's still the indoor farmer's market. They've been generally packed with customers. The water department reports that they've been reading water meters, winter maintenance of their facilities. Uh, they mailed letters reminding residents of their required annual backflow testing. Not sure what that is. They had their, uh, Department of Health sanitary survey, which passed with no violations. Everybody will be happy to know that. There was a sewer break on Washington Avenue repaired. Uh, they lowered the reservoir. And a service line leak was on Castle Road and that was repaired. I don't have Greg's, uh, I'm sure Greg is working away. That's it.
Um, the only thing I had to report is that Larry and I had a very successful kickoff meeting with the downtown group.
Jewel Clark was not...
She will be at the next, at the next meeting, but it's a good group and, um, we're up to, up to a fine start. And we are meeting the off Monday at 7:00.
Was I supposed to say something about my historic building?
No, I didn't have anything else to say.
Oh, okay. Okay. I won't say the secret meeting we're having. That's just a joke.
Let's not go to the, uh, Village Administrator's report.
Yeah, let's do that.
Nothing further.
Oh.
I think we're getting a little giddy.
Yeah. Village Clerk, Treasurer's report.
Nothing further.
Village Attorney's report.
Nothing other than you're welcome.
Public comment?
Comment?
How would you lower a reservoir?
It's hard. If you're Jim in the county, you know how to do it. If you try it, nah, it won't work. Just, you know, you try to take a straw and you...
There's actually valves that you turn that, that actually let the water out a little faster ahead of storms. So then there's, so then there's more room in the reservoir. retention device. When it rains, not bad.
Gotcha.
That's why, that's why we would do it. Well, 23.
It was actually a pretty big project to fix, though. Those, they hadn't been used in decades.
150 years.
And so they actually had a divers come in and repair it with like welding underwater. It was pretty cool.
Wow.
After 2009, 10.
The old has got a volunteer to be a diver.
Probably no one thought of this, but I bet you the health of Barney Burke is much better now because there's occasional inundations that come through, that, more like a natural result of the rain. But there's also, uh, in the summertime, in the heat of the summer, they'll release water, uh, before a thunderstorm. And so the brook actually has, uh, more flow in it than it has in past years. Right, which is just good for if you got, if you're a crayfish or something.
Who else support crayfish? Action items, Larry?
Nothing.
I didn't, I didn't have anything. I will now make a motion that's not going to be popular to adjourn to an executive session regarding a non-union personnel matter. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor.